philanthropy for Voice of San Diego. We are so happy to be here with you today. If you don't know, Voice of San Diego is a nonprofit investigative news organization committed to holding public officials accountable and giving you, the public, the information you need to be advocates for good government. As a nonprofit, we depend on members, donors, and sponsors like you to make our work possible. So, thank you for your support. I'd like to take a minute to recognize our sponsors who help make Politifest possible. A special thanks to the College of Arts and Sciences at the University of San Diego for being our partner for a seventh year. Our thanks also to the Sukwon Band of the Kumeyaia Nation, the United Domestic Workers Union, AARP, the San Diego Foundation, Business for Good, Hitzke Development, the San Diego Municipal Employees Association, the Asian Business Association, Planned Parenthood of the Pacific Southwest, Atlantis Group, and the Southern California Rental Housing Association. We'd also like to thank KPBS and I News Source, our partners in public matters. We are partnering together to share content, conversation, and events like Politifest to ensure all San Diegans understand their opportunity to participate in the democratic process and that it means more than voting in an election. A couple of logistical things for Politifest. If you can't attend any of our sessions in person, we will have the recordings up on our website next week. We welcome your questions. We'll have two volunteers, one on each side, who have note cards and pens for you to write down questions. If you have a question that you'd like to write down, just raise your hand and they'll bring it to you. And then when you're done writing it, raise your hand again and they will collect it. And we will have that during our question and answer portion. You can tweet along with us and with this session by using the hashtag Politifest2024 on social media and tag us on Instagram and Facebook. Now allow me to introduce our moderator, Andrea Lopez-Vieja Fonya, who is our managing editor at Voice of San Diego.
Thank you, Erica. Hi, how's everyone doing? All right, I will speak loudly. If you can't hear me, let me know. I am super, super jittery from all the coffee I've had. This always happens at Politifest. So, yeah, just let me know if you can't hear me, but I should be pretty loud because I've got all the caffeine in me. We're gonna have a great discussion, debate here, I think. I sat in the middle just in case it gets a little wild, but I think we'll be fine. Let me introduce to you your candidates for the District Nine City Council race. On my left is Sean Elo Rivera. He currently represents the district. He was elected in 2020 and has served as the city council president since 2021. Thanks for coming, Sean. Awesome. And then to my right is Terry Hoskins. He is a retired police officer and sergeant major with the Marine Corps. If elected, this would be his first time in office, so welcome, Terry. Awesome, let me just make sure y'all, your mics on. Good, good, okay. So, we're doing something new with Politifest this year. We're setting up a little primer. But since this is a debate, I'm not gonna get too into the primer. If you already are familiar with District Nine, you know what neighborhoods are in it, you know top issues. So, I'll speed past that, but I may, throughout the course of the debate, interrupt our panelists and have them explain a term they might have mentioned, so we'll just do that. Of course, District Nine includes the communities of Alvarado Estates, City Heights College Area, College View Estates, El Cerrito, Kensington, Mission Valley East, Mountain View, Mount Hope, Normal Heights, Redwood Village, Rolando Park, Rolando Village, Stockton, and Tomage. Did I miss any? Sounds right, cool. It's an incredibly diverse district. I had the great honor of writing about D9 when I was a community reporter at the Union Tribune. It was one of my favorite districts to cover and write about because the communities were so diverse and the issues and stories they had to share were quite incredible. So, I recently went to a debate where our two candidates debated, and I heard a lot of concerns about housing, college parties, of course, parking at a library, homelessness, and public safety. So, hopefully, we get to elaborate on some of those conversations. Good, good, okay. So, I'll start with you, Sean. Earlier this week, I was watching a city council meeting, and you guys received an update on the city's shelter beds. As we've reported, there are not enough beds available, not even for those who want them. And in June, you offered a series of steps, tools, that the city could use to bring more shelters online. There were a lot of recommendations in that page. But I want to have you elaborate on one of them. One of them was eminent domain. As we reported, Mayor Todd Gloria didn't seem super thrilled about the idea. But can you explain why you view this as an opportunity? And maybe can you explain what eminent domain is?
Yes, thank you, Andrea. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I appreciate the opportunity. So, as was mentioned, we have a, we obviously have a homelessness crisis, a housing crisis. We don't have enough shelter beds for the folks who want shelter. Despite what you may hear, more often than not, in fact, by a wide margin, when people seek shelter, they're not able to receive that shelter. That's unacceptable. Nobody here should be okay with sleeping with people sleeping on the streets, especially when they are seeking shelter. So, we put forward a memo with a number of recommendations in there, ranging from diversion from our shelter system with non-congregate options. And one of those options was eminent domain. An eminent domain is a process, along with what we refer to as friendly condemnation, where the government acquires property for fair market value because they see a critical need for that property and use for that property. Well, we're in an emergency. We have people sleeping on streets who should not be sleeping on streets. Our shelters are full. We have properties in District Nine and other parts of the city that have been underutilized or poorly utilized for years that have been magnets for crime and vandalism and negative activities that have hurt the neighborhoods for a long time. And in my mind, the idea of allowing a resource, a crucial resource, like a hotel or a motel or other property, to continue to be a negative for the community when we're in an emergency is unacceptable. And so, I absolutely think that the city should be pursuing opportunities to engage with property owners, to turn those points of pain that are in our community into points of pride, where families and seniors can get the shelter, particularly non-congregate shelter that we know is so successful in getting people out of path, not just indoors, but on the path to permanent housing, which I think should be our goal for every single person who's experiencing homelessness in San Diego.
Do you see this as something that, you know, you could get buy-in from? I know the mayor kind of seems not too interested.
I'm not gonna drop it because I think it's a values issue. Again, it is unacceptable to me that we have people sleeping on the streets who are seeking shelter. It's unacceptable to me that some of those people are seniors who have health issues and who the traditional congregant shelter setting is simply unacceptable to. People who cannot go indoors because they have incontinence issues or other health issues that don't allow them to move into a congregant setting either with the dignity that they deserve or the health needs that they have. So, given that those are the stakes in my mind, I think we have a moral imperative to make the best use of property possible. And friendly condemnation and eminent domain is a tool that we can use to do that. It is also a tool, and the city attorney's office agree with this. It's a tool that provides important leverage to the city in negotiating through our normal transactions. When we take that tool off the table and say that we aren't going to use it, that adds leverage to those property owners who might otherwise give a little bit more in the negotiations with the city.
Just a little background on that. When Sean released his memo, we reported on that memo and the mention of eminent domain. And the mayor's office did not seem interested in pursuing that option, which then the city attorney responded with her own, you know, thoughts that saying no to eminent domain so publicly was troublesome for current negotiations that have to do with the thousand-bed shelter the mayor wants to open in Middletown.
If I could just add one other piece for context. Within the few weeks prior to the recent release of that memo, the city had utilized eminent domain to acquire property for, and it's an important bike path for part of our regional bike network. But a couple of those properties that we acquired through that process, the acquisitions happened in very short amount of time, in less than a year. And it wasn't our, you know, the more arduous eminent domain process that I think many people think about, which leads to, you know, time in court and trial. But instead, a property owner that said, oh, sure, I'll happily sell that. I've been looking to get this off my hands, or that seems like a fair price. We have to offer a fair price. And that property was able to transition in less than a calendar year. So, knowing that we have a history of being able to execute in that amount of time was another reason why I offered that when I did.
Terry, you weighed in on Sean's memo, and you admitted that some, quote, "may be practical", but you seem to take issue with others. Can you kind of explain what those were?
I can. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming. I really do appreciate it, and thank for San Diego for hosting us. So, our shelter dilemma did not just come up two, three months ago. Our council and our city has known about our dilemma with shelter beds for a long time. So, acting like it's now an emergency, they should have done something two years ago or three years ago, not just now. One of the thing with eminent domains, it affects, to acquire property, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's supposed to have the possibility of affecting everyone, like a bike path. Anyone could use the bike path. Typically, they do it when they acquire land for highways because the concept is anyone's, he's gonna use, anyone could use that. However, in this situation, it really doesn't apply to everyone. So, I'm kind of against the strong hand of government. One, taking away rights from people. And then, two, kind of employing their rights when they don't have to. If this would have been looked at in a realistic manner last year, earlier on last year, where you had a year, two years to go, then they could have found these properties and negotiated without having to use the threat of, you know, eminent domain. And from what I understand, part of the issue was, and I think the mayor said this was, and it does take a long time to acquire property. I guess that depends upon, obviously, the owner of the property. But the incumbent said this was, we're in an emergency. But at the moment, we're not in an emergency, we're in a crisis. But no one has said that San Diego is an emergency. So, I think at this point, you know, we have not had a great history of purchasing properties. I mean, 101 Ash Street is a great example. We go out and we buy things really quickly and then we're stuck with them. So, I think, you know, even if you bought property, it will take a while for it to get up and running, right? And I don't know if we have any plans inside homeless shelters. That's the thing. That's one of my biggest complaints with the city when they talk about a thousand-bed shelter. You know, a great example, I'm like, well, okay, boom, you got the thousand beds. How are you gonna, how's it gonna work? Are you gonna house men and women together? No, you have to separate them. About couples, you have to separate them. LGBTQ plus, you got to separate them. Transgender, you're gonna have to separate them. What about people with animals? You're gonna have to separate them. That has not been discussed. There is no plan afterwards. So, my biggest thing again is that this wasn't, this just didn't happen this month, last month, and month before last. Everyone has known these timelines. And now, maybe because it's an election year, everyone's kind of come up with possibilities and probabilities and potentials how to solve it.
Can I just ask a question? Terry, is your position that the general public does not benefit from homeless individuals receiving shelter?
Okay, so, my opponent is trying to say that, you know, that I'm totally against homelessness. And so, again, I want to finish my thing. They do. Society does benefit. But you gotta be, you can't be hypocritical about how we approach this. So, when the city passed the encampment, the camp ban, my, the incumbent voted against it. But yet, at the same time, that's how he's moving people within the district from one side of the road to the other by telling people, get it used, get it done. Another issue is that I'm not really, I'm not really convinced that shelter first is an option, is a viable option. And I don't think housing first is a viable option. I like to utilize Huntington Beach as a perfect role model, I think, for housing. I mean, excuse me, for homelessness. And what they do is they have a very vibrant navigation center that's run by Mercy House. They really, if you look at their entire scheme, and I'm sure we're gonna talk about it later, but they do it right. Again, I don't, I'm not for eminent domain. I don't think government should do that, especially when you had two years to plan for this. This just didn't happen.
To Terry's point, we knew that some of these shelters were going to close. Do you feel that the city was kind of slow to respond to that closure?
I think the city's been slow to respond to homelessness for decades. But I also think we've done a lot. So, we've expanded, we have expanded shelter capacity. And this is one of the reasons why I am so committed to the prevention side of homelessness. Shelter is a Band-Aid. Shelter is not a permanent home. Nobody should live in shelter for the rest of their lives. And it should not be our end goal to simply get everyone who's on the streets into shelter. The end goal for the city should be to have everyone who's experiencing homelessness no longer be experiencing homelessness. So, over the course of the last few years, we've expanded not just the number of beds, but the types of beds. We have converted hotels and motels into shelter, the non-congregate shelter. That's particularly, again, that is extremely helpful for families with children and seniors. That non-congregate setting is the most efficient for getting someone, giving someone opportunity to get their feet under them, get their life settled, get their business in order so that they can get on that path to permanent housing. We've done that. We have experienced doing that. I championed that as soon as I got in office. It takes time for some of these things to come online. So, we've expanded the types of shelter. Terry is absolutely right. We need different types of shelter for folks with different types of needs. So, we've expanded those options. But we need to do more. And the memo that was put forward in June was, one, with recent news that beds would be going offline, and, two, in anticipation of the consideration of the Ketner and Bynan lease that was being proposed by the mayor. So, the idea that I have not done anything or proposed anything is ludicrous. It either is a lie or a complete misunderstanding of the city civics over the last three and a half years. There's been nobody who's offered more types of solutions than I have on council. I will say, to point to Huntington Beach as a model for anything that the city of San Diego should do is wild to me. I grew up in Huntington Beach. That is a city governed by ultra-right-wing conservatives. It is the Florida of California. And I mean that in the worst way possible. They are completely out of step with the rest of this state. They have had completely unprepared and radical people elected into office, including UFC fighters. It is a Trump city. And again, the idea that we would, we would point to that as a model for how San Diego should follow is unacceptable to me and I think should open a lot of eyes in this room.
So rare response.
Yes, you toured Huntington Beach. And you saw what they were doing. What is it exactly that you felt, you know, could work here in San Diego?
Well, briefly, first of all, I don't lie. I think I spent 26 years in Marine Corps, very successful, attainment rate of a sergeant major, the highest enlisted that I could become. 15 years with San Diego PD. I'm not on any Brady list. I don't lie, I understand, so I speak my mind. The incumbent can say what he wants. But he sent the memo out in June. We knew these beds were going offline way before June. So, again, when the city acts slow, you know, they did not, and they just didn't take proactive action in this. And now everything is kind of like, you know, an emergency. And instead, they should have tough action before. And if the mayor wasn't going to, then the council should have, which he is the leadership of. He controls everything that comes on the docket. And so, this could have been brought up, and it was not. So, you're right, Andrea. I did tour Huntington Beach, and I, I found, and I don't know anything about Huntington Beach, so unless he's a Trump supporter, I don't know why he keeps talking about Trump. But, but for me, in your newspaper, the North County Times, Tegas, wrote an article how some of the mayors of North County went to Huntington Beach to tour their facility. I read the piece, and I was pretty impressed because it just didn't talk about the shelter side of it. It talked about the law enforcement side of it, how they've taken things completely off the plate for law enforcement. They have a, like, and I'll call it a rapid response team, but that's not it, of technicians that have been trained in de-escalation. And they'll give you, every year, if you just go on their website, look, a number of something like 4,500 times this last year where law enforcement did not respond to a mental health crisis like we do here in San Diego. You know, law enforcement is a 911 for everything. You gotta, you know, got something happening, if you don't know who to call, typically it's 911 or the non-American standard. So, when I talk about how this model is successful, that's what it does. It talks about that. If you look at, and I don't know when the incumbent was last in Huntington Beach, but when I drove it, because I'm thinking, okay, I know what our shelters look like downtown, right? We know what downtown looks like. I'm thinking, around the Opera Project, this is gonna look the same. It does not look the same. So, I was very impressed. I talked with business owners around the shelter. There's no signage or anything about it. You can't walk up to it. There's little, you know, they got like a little bus that takes people places. So, you can drive if you have a car, you just can't ride your bike up. But they'll take you where you want to go with the shuttle. They got storage facilities. And another good thing that we do, and no one's talked about with our, you know, shelter facility, because we don't have a plan. You know, again, I've talked to thousands of homeless people when I was a police officer, thousands. I know what works. I know what doesn't work. I know what will entice somebody to take a shelter if they're addicted to something, or if they have mental illness. And I know some, and I know things that won't work. So, Huntington Beach has a very low barrier. So, what I mean is they got things that we require you must have, they don't. Sobriety is one. If you have an addiction of anything, and they're trying to get you to a facility and you can't be, and sobriety isn't, well, sobriety is a requirement, you're not gonna take that, you're not gonna go to that shelter. You're not gonna take that program. So, they have an extremely low barrier for sobriety. Doesn't mean you can't come in there under the influence. It just means you can't do it there. So, they have an amnesty box. People come in, they drop alcohol off, they drop drugs off. Nothing's asked. They get fed, showered, they get inundated with services. They have food that's prepared for them. They even have a yoga room. I don't know why they need a yoga room, but they have a yoga room. When I was there, a person was actually relaxing and in his own little world, which is good, he was happy. And everyone in there that I spoke with was appreciative because it wasn't like, well, you gotta get off the street and then be clean all of a sudden, because that does not work. So, having low barriers work. So, when I talk about the homeless, I mean, the homeless program they have with a very viable navigation system, you know, is amazing. In other words, they got a huge partnership outside of City Hall. City Hall doesn't really govern what goes on in that shelter, right? So, what they have is, let's say that Terry, who is unsheltered, and as the incumbent said, maybe he only need 50 bucks or 100 bucks to keep his rent up. So, they send out an email to all their partnerships, nonprofit, faith-based organizations, and for-profit. And they say, I have an individual unsheltered named Terry. All he needs is $100 to keep his, to keep his rent. Somebody in that partnership, that partnership, that picks up Terry. So, I'm not talking about the municipal side of Huntington Beach. I'm speaking merely to the homeless crisis and how they approached it. So, for someone to sit there and just, without even looking at it, I think it says a lot about, hope it opens your eyes.
I think a lot of the discussion about shelter, we have been writing about how people want shelter, and they often can't secure a bed or try several times before they can get a bed. Now, this conversation has really come to the forefront since the city of San Diego did adopt an unsafe camping ban, which prevented people from camping on the street at all times in certain places like near schools and near shelters, and then at all times, or at times if there is shelter available. Now, Terry, at a recent debate, you said that you, you didn't necessarily think that, you know, police should like go around and arrest people related to the camping ban. But you mentioned that you believed in nudging. What is nudging to you?
So, you know, if there's rules on the books where it talks about that must pass by the city, or camping ban is, where camping is prohibited. So, the progressive, how we deal with it now is in a progressive manner. So, if I, if we as a law enforcement officer contact Terry who's unsheltered, the first time is communication, is just talking. It's like, they classify it as education. The next time, we'll do a field interview. Again, it's just classified, just education, but it's documented for sure this time. Next time, maybe a citation. Next time, it could be a misdemeanor arrest. It depends what the totality of the situation is. But if I move two blocks down and begin another encampment, that process starts all over again. So, what you and I see mostly on the streets are the really homeless that are really addicted to stuff, whether it's mental illness, whether it's some type of controlled substances or alcohol. You know, they went through trauma to be where they're at. They don't have trust, they don't have a lot of things. So, it's financially unstable for us to continue moving encampments from one side of the street to the other, rescinding ESD to go clean up it. And then the next day, it's right back, and two weeks later, it's the same. You see it, and I see it. So, nudging is a way that we take enforcement action, right? And you say, you're, you know, criminalizing homelessness. I'm not. Because one of the things that, you know, and one of the other, I think, classes or discussions is on Prop 47 and that kind of stuff. What Prop 47 did, to just briefly go through it, it prevented people from getting in drug court for a long time. So, in other words, if Terry was a heroin addict and police officer contacted me for whatever reason, it was legal, I had it on me possession, it would be a felony, felony, book into jail. Everyone knows that those felonies got moved down to, because you're a wobbler, right? So, you can book it as a felony, but it normally gets prosecuted as a wobbler. So, but what it did was, it got me into the system, where on my way out, the judge would give me drug court, drug court. It put me into the system. So, what Prop 47, it alleviated all that. So, I do believe in nudging, absolutely. I think you have to, you know, we talk about quality of life. It's not quality of life for the residents or for the unsheltered to have them live like they live. It's just not. I've arrested some, I made great friends with some, I've watched some die. A quick little story of a little African-American lady in Rolando, in Rolando Park. lady in Malando, in Malando Park. I've known this lady for years, years. So, one day we're, and she, and I go, I'm not gonna tell you anything, because that's, that's not right. But I'll say, what I tell you all the time, she goes, Officer Terry, you tell me you care more about me than I do about myself. And I would say, yes, I do. And then, one day we're talking, she, well, my mom only lives like a mile away, in District Nine. I'm like, you're kidding me. She's like, don't. And I go, well, how come I don't know that? She goes, I don't know. You're the cop. Can I go? Fair enough. So, I took a selfie of her with me. I went to the house, knocked on the door. Now, just picture this, for what you, however you wanna picture it. The lady came to the door. I'm in uniform. What do you want? I said, hey, I'm Officer Terry. I'm looking for the family of so-and-so. What has she done? She hasn't done anything. Why are you here? I said, well, I've talked with your daughter for years, and I just now realized that her parents live here. So, I wanted to see if there's anything I could do in conjunction with you to get her off the streets, because I'm worried about her welfare. She comes outside our house crying. She said, of all the time law enforcement has came to her house about her daughter, this is the first time a law enforcement officer walked up to her house saying, I want to work with you to get my daughter off the street. So, we talked like an hour, and I'm almost done. We talked like an hour. I took a selfie of her, of us together, went back to the young lady that's on the street. And, now, she didn't come back off, she didn't leave the streets. But, it reinforced the fact that you can't treat all homeless people the same. It's not a cookie cutter environment. And that's what people think it is. It's a cookie cutter. So, nudging, you have to be able to nudge people for your quality of life and for theirs, or apologize will be a long one.
Sean, you voted against the camping ban. Have your feelings changed?
No. It was a tense meeting. But what I thought then, and what I remember, and I've seen nothing to change my mind about, is that there are no experts in this field who believe that that, that, that law as written was going to reduce homelessness in San Diego. It was going to move where homelessness is in San Diego, but it was not going to reduce. And I appreciate the story that Terry just told. I think that there needs to be more of that. I think it is tragic that is the first time that that sort of interaction with that younger woman's family had happened in that way. The system should be built in such a way where that is the first place we can look for folks who are experiencing homelessness to, you know, friends and family, to see if there are ways to connect them housing. And clearly, if that's the first time that that happened, the system is not built in that way. The ban, I oppose for a number of reasons. One, I did not think as the Constitution was currently being interpreted by the, at that point in time, by the Supreme Court, before the radical right-wing Supreme Court overturned, changed the law with respect to homelessness, that it would be upheld in the courts. I was sad that it did, but that it was upheld. Two, I thought it was setting unrealistic expectations for the community as to what they would see as a result. And three, I thought there would be huge implications for neighborhoods that weren't gonna be as high up on the priority list. We do not have, did not have, and do not have the resources to, even if you think the ban is a good idea, we do not have the resources to enforce that equally across the city. And if you can't enforce that equally across the city, you should ask yourself, then where will folks end up? Where are we trying to push them from, and where are they most likely to end up as a result? And we knew in District Nine, from previous experiences, that crackdowns on homelessness in downtown led to increased homelessness, street homelessness in District Nine, in areas that did not have any of the social services or facilities to help those folks get back on their feet, that also, and also did not receive the same sort of attention from the city, meaning that the impacts were not just more heavily felt, but longer felt as well. That trash that ended up on the sidewalk or in a canyon stayed there longer. So, it was a bad deal for District Nine. Zero experts in the field of homelessness showed up to speak in support of it. I tried to be guided by research and expertise. And I do not think that the expectations that were set were going to be, able to be met by the city. I've studied homelessness since I was a law student. I have my own personal experiences with it, and never, I, I need to understand what nudging is. I, I understand as a concept, there's, we either have a ban or we don't. We're either going to enforce the ban or we're not going to.
You would enforce it.
So, so you're, you're supportive of the ban?
Yes, absolutely.
Because it's gotten fuzzy the last couple days.
Shouldn't have.
Okay.
Sean, earlier you-
May I say one more thing about that? So, you know, it's easy to sit there and say that you don't agree with, you know, the Supreme Court and all the other stuff. That's fine. Well, that's not my, that's not my wheelhouse, right? My wheelhouse is to do what people tell us that we can do. I mean, I'm not in law enforcement anymore, but at that time. It's funny that when the mayor said this was gonna be the policy of the city, and now you got the governor, who has also stated the same. So, I don't think it's so far a fix to say that everybody is kind of tired of the status quo that's been going on, because it hasn't worked. Had it, has not worked.
Yeah, I think that's a false choice. The idea that the only options in front of this city are that ordinance is passed, or the status quo, and let's let things persist as they were, is an absolutely false choice. There are a multitude of-
What are the-
Getting, getting back, yeah. So, again, prevention, knowing that eighty-five percent of people who experience homelessness begin that experience as a result of financial circumstances.
People you see out of the street, Sean, is not like that. The people you see that are in encampments, that are extremely fortified, they, it's not that, that's not why they're there, Sean.
Okay. So, Terry's got, Terry's got his opinion, and then there could be a statement?
There's a statewide study of thousands of individuals who are experiencing homelessness, and everyone has researched this. Eighty-five percent of people become homeless. That's not, that's not me why they're homeless today, right? I don't know about anybody else in this room, but personally, my, my physical and mental health would not hold up so well if I was living on the streets. I know that from personal experience. I know that from common sense. So, the idea that there isn't some sort of degrading that happens to a person's physical and mental ability while they're living on the streets, that defies common sense. Eighty-five percent of people become homeless for financial circum, for financial reasons. The fastest growing group of people who are becoming homeless are seniors. That means people on fixed incomes who cannot keep up with the cost of living. My, maybe I'm, I'm missing something. I have not heard about the senior drug epidemic that is, is taking over our, our boomer generation.
Well, it's funny to be comical about-
No, I'm not, I'm not done. I'm not, I'm not being comical.
You're being comical about it.
No, I'm being dead serious about this, because it's a deadly serious issue.
It is.
The, the, the best way to get ahead on homelessness is through prevention. The city council, which I led and lead, put forward in the budget funding for a prevention program that has incredible success. We've pushed harder and harder and harder to put more funding in that. I've worked with philanthropy to establish additional programs for seniors to keep them in their homes. That's the way we get ahead. On a monthly basis, San Diego over the last two years has housed anywhere in the range between seven-hundred and twelve-hundred people per month who are experiencing homelessness. That means they exit homelessness and enter permanent housing. Every single month, we've had more people fall into homelessness. The problem is not that we don't know how to get people off the streets. The problem is not that we don't know how to get people out of shelter. The problem is that we don't know how to keep them off the streets. And we will not do that in any effective way whatsoever, if we are only willing to respond to the worst version of the problem that we see in front of us, instead of actually thinking a few steps ahead and trying to prevent it. It is preventable. I will never accept that in the richest country in the world, and one of the wealthiest cities in the richest country in the world, that homelessness is an inevitable fact that we have to accept. I will not accept that.
Well, there are, there are reasons that you and I differ, and obviously, this is one of them. But, when you talk about the elderly, why don't we get with the tenants and say, let's come up with, the lady that we're, I talked about this with, and we called it the McCann-Hoskins Pact, where you get with the tenant, where you have elderly living, and say, we're gonna establish a ten-year lease. We're gonna give you tax credits, so that you don't raise your rent on the elderly.
Terry, we passed a tenant protection ordinance, which you oppose, which had additional protections for seniors. And again, we've established homelessness prevention programs for seniors. These are actual policies that we've passed and programs we've put in place.
And it worked.
So, they're working. We need to invest in them more.
And by the way, talking about numbers that are getting housed, what he don't tell you is, the reason why the numbers are high, because they get unhoused. They get into housing, if they're not in the proper services that they need, they leave. And then all of a sudden, they're back out on the street, and it's like, it's just a revolving door.
Thank you for introducing housing, Terry, because we're not gonna solve the homelessness crisis here today, unfortunately. Sean, there was a city council meeting, again, that I was watching. You guys-
Sorry.
I don't normally, so don't feel bad for me. I was just prepping for this session. But, you said that the housing conversation is complex. There is the financing and the permitting side. And when you guys have provided an annual report on homes, you said this, there's a lot of interest, this was in response to what your fellow council members were saying, there's a lot of interest in seeing more affordable development happen. And that won't happen without an investment on our end. What investment do you see is missing?
Well, at the larger scale, I believe in social housing. I, I don't see a way out of California's housing crisis, or the, the American housing crisis, without massive public investment in housing. That means the public building housing, utilizing social housing model, where we have mixed income developments that provide housing opportunities for people up and down the income ladder, dignified housing that receives the same sort of respect that any of our neighborhoods receive. So, that's what I, I am advocating for at the federal and state levels. I'm a big supporter of that. Until we get there, we need local dedicated revenue. At, in the, in the short term, the city is putting money toward affordable housing, like providing loans, providing grants to get that done. The cities, through the city council's leadership, as the housing authority, the Housing Commission has secured hundreds of millions of dollars for what we call Project Home Key, which is the conversion of motels and hotels into permanent housing for folks. We've done that actually quite successfully over the last couple cycles. It's investments like that. But ultimately, we are going to need ongoing dedicated revenue, which will provide the builders, whether that means the Housing Commission or other builders in our community, the knowledge to know that there will be funding there for them to tap into to, to build what they need. Right now, as I've mentioned before, we have a public need, a basic human right in housing, that is almost solely dependent on private funding. And not just private, private for-profit funding. And that model is breaking our society. We are living in a, in a city where fewer and fewer people are being able to see themselves having a future here, where young families are having to face the decision of whether or not they should stay in a city that they love, or have to move out of state, where our college students, with less and less and less certainty, are, or more, I should say, more and more uncertainty, are graduating with nothing more than a holt that they'll be able to continue to live here. And so, that seems like a very, very good reason for us to have local dedicated revenue, to invest in more affordable housing, to supplement the, the market rate that, you know, is being built.
When you talk about public housing, you mean like the city seeking out funds from other, like from the federal government?
Well, yeah, I think that would be, it'd be a combination of, of funds, the sources that could be, and that's part of some of the policies that need to change at the federal and state level, would allow us to cobble those together, so that the public could actually build housing, right? So, there's publicly owned, there's publicly financed, right? Those are, those are different things, and I'm for both.
So, if, if I may, just quickly, so, as a councilman, you gotta be inclusive. You gotta have, you're at it, your, your, your ability to work within your district has to include everyone, right? So, keep that in mind. You gotta be, you can't be divided or in separate groups. You have to focus on everyone together. So, a couple months ago, the UT published an article that said there were two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine homes available to be purchased in July, available on the market. If you look at a, a recent study, corporate ownership, just in D9 itself, owned thirteen to fourteen percent, depending on what little community it is, in of single-family neighborhoods' homes in District Nine, thirteen to fourteen percent are already owned by corporate landlords. N O B, as an, an example, is one individual has two-hundred hotels, Airbnbs. He has basically bought apartment complexes and turned them into what the article said were de facto hotels. So, there's a couple of things that we can do immediately. We can close the loophole in the Airbnb policy, so that probably forty-five-hundred homes will come on the market immediately.
Terry, you're gonna get that passed and keep it from being reverendized?
Yes.
You are?
I will. Yeah, because I am a uniter, and I am, I believe in the ability to get people to see correct thinking. It's developers that don't want it passed. So, everyone that is on the council who's-
Not choice developers who don't want it passed. That's not a referendum.
Well, that's what I think, Neil.
So, that, you can do that immediately. Those are things that are clear choices that can happen today, or tomorrow, Monday, whatever that is.
Along the lines of housing, Terry, you've been critical of the bonus ADU program. Why is it a failure in your eyes if that's how you feel?
Yeah, I do feel that way, because, one, I am a strong supporter of single-family neighborhoods. One day, everybody may want to live in a single-family neighborhood. You may not. You may want to live in a high-rise downtown, and that's, that's fine. But, a lot of people like the peace and quiet of single-family neighborhoods. The problem with the bonus ADU program, first of all, is that it hasn't really made any affordable housing. It's just, you know, middle-rate or high-rate housing. So, we could go back to the original state-level program for the, for the ADUs and JADUs, and it will suffice, because almost every one of them that have been deeded so far, none of them have been low to moderate income. So, when you have to pay twenty-two-hundred bucks for a studio, and you're a student, I don't think that's low, I don't think that's low. If you have to pay twenty-six-hundred bucks for a one-bedroom, that's not low. Couple of weeks ago, we were doing a cleanup on one of the canyons, and a gentleman, who I know, came down, was talking to us, and we were, actually, it was my campaign manager and them were talking first, and he owns a huge apartment complex, I mean, a huge, actually owns like two or three up on this hill. And you know what he said? He rents his three bedrooms for? Sixteen-hundred dollars a month. He says he does this because he knows people can't afford anything else. And if developers come in and flip properties, that sixteen-hundred dollars will not be there anymore. So, we need to get involved in who necessarily is purchasing our land. And again, it's developers. And, and, you know, and developers, they're in it to make money. That's fine. No one is trying to stifle anybody from making money. That's the American way. Good for them. But, we're, they're doing it now at the backs of people that can't afford it. And that's where we need to step in.
Is there any sort of data or reports to show that most of these ADUs are being built by developers?
Uh, yes. Well, maybe the, the bonus ADU program isn't really being utilized. So, a lot of the ADUs that are being built, they're, they're not affordable. So, in other words, if you get the bonus program, you have to have so many affordable, or you get an off-site in case need. But, there's ADUs, but they're not, in markets, but they're not being low to moderate income. They're higher. So, I'm sure the city can pull that back. If there's different organizations out there that I got it from, I'm sure they got it, and the city can easily get it.
Sean, you have thoughts on ADUs that you spoke about at that debate that you guys were at recently, that, you know, it's about bringing more housing online?
Yes. And I really appreciate the last part of that question. At some point, almost every housing conversation starts to drift away from what we're really- At some point, almost every housing conversation starts to drift away from what we're really talking about, which is homes for human beings to live in. And we use, you know, terminology like ADUs and units. It's our houses that human beings will live in, they'll have a roof over their head. That's really important, I think we should keep that in mind. When we talk about it in these abstract ways, as if apartments are a four-letter word and not places where people live, places where families like mine live, I think we're kind of losing sight of what's really important, and that is providing folks with an essential for a decent life, which is a home. I have yet to see any economist from any ideology say that reducing the supply of a high-end demand good will reduce prices. Fewer homes on the market means higher prices, and I don't know about you, but I don't think people can afford to pay more for housing than they are. Are there ways for us to regulate more? Absolutely, and I have pushed the envelope on that more than any city council member in San Diego. With respect to tenant protections, which is a critical, critical piece of this. We've pushed back on what off-sighting would happen and where, but that's a different program altogether, there is no off-sighting of ADUs, it's not a thing. And what I hear simultaneously is a criticism of the bonus ADU program, that it's destroying neighborhoods and that it's not being utilized. So, I don't know which one it is, is it destroying neighborhoods or is it not being used at all?
It's, I would look at it as destroying the tapestries of neighborhoods for people that live there and their quality of life, and it's not being utilized in a way that it is not making low-income housing.
Yes, I think, look, there's a generational divide in this conversation that is an important one. There is no affordable housing in San Diego, with the exception of deep restricted affordable housing. That left years ago. Any of us who are in this room and have tried to rent in the last five years could tell you, affordable doesn't exist. So you're right, $2,200 a month isn't affordable for most families, but $2,200 is less than 26, or 27, or 3,000. And I don't know a family or a single individual who would rather pay that 400 or 500 dollars a month. It doesn't exist. The biggest issues we are facing in San Diego are housing affordability and our cost of living crisis. And everything that Terry's proposed with respect to housing would drive up costs and make a preciously, preciously limited need in housing even more demand and less than supply.
Will you open up more housing if you close the Airbnb loophole?
Terry, saying that we're going to close the Airbnb loophole after the legislative history on that item, and that it's just going to happen overnight, is no different than saying, I'm going to drop 5,000 units out of the sky and we're going to have new homes for people.
Well, I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just saying that I, from what I understand, talking with certain council members, that they would concur with that by closing that loophole, it's already been discussed, it just hasn't been brought up. And you're the guy with the docket, you can
I am the guy with the docket who brings items forward from committee, and then I No, I don't take items away from committee, that's never happened. Okay, I don't even know what you're talking about at this point.
Well, we got a lot of questions from you guys, so we're going to start off first, though, with our first question from Catherine Abila. She is with the Aaron Price Fellows Program. Thanks.
Hi, once again, my name is Catherine Abila, I go to Hoover High School, and as someone who lives in the diverse community of City Heights, where many Spanish-speaking individuals, and like myself, and many other language speakers that live in the area, I haven't seen enough bilingual communicators involved in the government. So how can other language speakers feel involved and heard in the community?
That's a great, that's a great question, and it's something that our office has worked really hard on. So you go to Hoover High School, you know how diverse our community is. It starts with who we hire on our staffs, right? So, we entered office on day one with a staff that could speak to not just bilingual speakers, but to Spanish speakers, to folks with Somali communities, folks with BFFs community, that was really important. And from my understanding, our staff has had the most linguistic diversity of any staff that's represented District 9. But District 9 is even more diverse than we're able to hire staff to communicate with on our own, right? And so that means partnering with community-based organizations, that means hiring interpreters for budget forums. We held a budget forum with Spanish as a primary language, and unfortunately, we got significant pushback on that from some folks who were in this room, thinking that that was unfair of us to host a forum with Spanish as the primary language and English being translated for them. So, it's something that we work on a lot at the office level, and then at the city council level, we've tried to make it easier for translation services to be tapped into. Our city clerk, who reports to the city council, she's bilingual and does an incredible job of some on-the-fly translation when necessary. And then we always, always, when we anticipate that an item will have folks from multiple backgrounds with different language abilities, seek professional translation so that everyone can have their voices heard, and that they can understand what's going on as well.
So, that's a great question, and it's not, it shouldn't just apply to Hoover High, it should also apply to Crawford, because it's also in our history. You know, I hope that you keep that same passion and want, and you be the person that comes into the bloody pole and agree. Because you're right, there probably isn't enough, right? I mean, I don't, I didn't take account, I don't know, but it probably isn't enough. So there's one, and you would be a success, right, for your community, and I tell you another person was. So there's a young, well, we may not be young now, but she's a captain in the San Diego Police Department, who is the commanding officer of the Mid-City Police Station, Martha Sains. Born and raised about three blocks from that police station. She is a walking success story. You could be that walking success story, and I hope you are.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay. We'll start with Sean on this one, this is from the audience. What's your position on Prop 33? And Prop 33 is the proposition that would repeal a 1995 law that prevented cities and counties from regulating rents, right? I got that right?
That's how I've gotten in my head. Yeah. So, the, let's make sure we get the issue right, because we pulled up this one
And they're asking, what's your position on Prop 33, and do you support rent control?
So, we'll start with the first part. Rent control is a tool that can be useful. I'm supportive of it in certain manner, and in certain places and certain times. I don't think it's going to achieve the outcomes that folks want, but I think we need it, we probably need it today in San Diego. I don't think it's viable politically, and so it's, that part's really important. So I can believe that it'd be helpful, I can believe that it would slow down the increasing cost of rent, which is super important. I don't see a path for that to pass, or to stay on the books. And so, I've had conversations with folks in the, in the tenant advocacy world about this. The amount of energy that we would spend trying to do that, I'd rather build housing that folks can live in. I think there's a similar amount of energy and effort that we need to go into vacant housing affordable in San Diego. And I, given how steep of a hell that seems to climb, given the likelihood that it'd be referendized, and then pulled off the books once it was passed, if it was passed, my preference would be to do something that would stick. When we do, that thing that would stick is by actually creating more affordable homes. Prop 33, though, is important, because there's a real inability for cities to be able to put those mechanisms in place when they need them. And so freeing up cities to do that when they need to is a really, really important tool. Who asked that, if I can ask, is it, we're talking at Costa Hawkins? Okay, yeah, so it is a big impediment to making rent more affordable throughout the state, and this is a statewide issue. San Diego can make housing more affordable here as a city, it's a big city, it's an important city in terms of the overall housing ecosystem, but it's not the only city. And so, something like Prop 33, which gives more tools, more cities, a important tool to regulate rent, could be super, super helpful in the overall landscape.
Thank you. Terry?
Yeah, I'll bring you really quick and easy on this, I kind of follow in the lines of Senator Tony Atkins. I oppose it. I oppose Prop 33.
Do you support rent control?
No, and I'll tell you why. Because rent control doesn't really affect large corporate apartment owners, but that affects small mom-and-pops owners. So, you have to be very careful and not price out your small mom-and-pops home providers, because that's what happens, right? It's, people have to make money in their investments, right? I've yet to see any small mom-and-pops housing providers try to overly continue to raise rent, rent, rent. I've seen corporate people do that, but not small mom-and-pops. So you have to be really careful in that, but I would say no. I think there's other ways to come after corporate greed, instead of establishing a cabant we can talk.
I just want to, there's this part of this conversation around housing that I think is super important. And a lot of it stems from the fact that housing is so overwhelmingly owned by the private sector. But we're talking about people's homes, right? And if you choose to, there's certain things that if you choose to invest your money in, you have different responsibilities. If you want to, you know, do it without a conscience, invest in the stock market, do what you want. But if you're going to own somebody's home, and you're going to make money off that, you're going to enjoy the benefits of watching the property value rise over time, you have additional responsibilities. And I don't care if you own one rental unit or 1 million rental units, the people who live in those homes deserve to know that they're not going to be unfairly treated, that they'll be unfairly priced out of their home, and they're going to be treated with respect. And it's not true that every quote-unquote mom-and-pop landlord is a good actor who takes care of their tenants. We know that. In fact, most of the most egregious stories that we hear at City Hall, and I saw as a legal intern, came from smaller property owners who were squeezing every cent they possibly could out of their mostly immigrant and refugee tenants, with the expectation that those folks would not have the legal representation or language skills to hold those folks accountable. And there are certain risks that, quite frankly, corporate landlords do not take, that some of our smaller landlords do. So, it is incredibly important that the playing field actually be level here, and that everyone be held in the same standard. Because again, I don't know about you, I don't think who owns your home should matter with respect to the level of housing security you can depend on on a monthly basis, or the respect that you're treated by with, from the person who owns that home.
So, I don't really know how we got on that, because we were talking about rent control, not good landlords and bad landlords necessarily, but there's going to be, you know, there may be some virtual signaling here just to word salad and stuff. I'm telling you, and City Heights is a very dense-populated Vietnamese community. A lot of those homes, apartments that they live in, are owned by Vietnamese people. And I'm telling you right now, if a corporate, and you're right, I'm not saying, I mean, I don't, I can't say every small mom-and-pop housing provider is a Mother Teresa, of course not. But I can say the ones that I've experienced and worked with, they are. They understand that they want a good tenant, they don't want to keep having a revolving door of tenants. So they have a good tenant, they will do what they can to keep the price down, to maintain good tenants. You don't want to have an apartment complex empty. So, big corporate, they can handle that, small mom-and-pops cannot. So, again, I think you just got to be careful when you make that definitive line.
We've got a good question here, I want to make sure we answer. So, in the past, the council has moved funds from stormwater infrastructure needs. Given the devastating January storm, in the future, how will you ensure the funds for needed infrastructure gets allocated?
Can you read the first part of that question?
In the past, the council has moved funds from stormwater infrastructure needs.
I don't, I don't know that that's, that might be technically accurate, but also not true at the same time. Money gets moved around in a variety of ways in the city, where we might initially be planning to pay for something with cash, and then instead use commercial paper or other type of financing mechanism to pay for it. We have funded our stormwater infrastructure much more in my time on council, and we've advocated for more funding for the infrastructure and for the maintenance. I stood on the streets that were flooded, those streets that were worst flooded in January, in December of 2021, calling for more investment in our stormwater system, calling for better maintenance of our stormwater system. Because those neighborhoods and neighbors knew that what was being done was not sufficient. This is an issue that we've been absolutely adamant about, that we need to spend more, we need to invest more in our infrastructure, especially our stormwater infrastructure, and this is why it's so important for the city to grow revenue. Because, again, talking points aside, anytime anyone with any budget expertise has looked at us to be budgeted over the last several years, they have, actually, over the last couple of decades, they have recognized the lack of revenue that the city has, and that we simply cannot do all the things that we need to do without growing that dividend. And so, I am 100% in support of fully funding our stormwater system. But to think that we can do that without growing revenue is a fantasy.
Is it safe to say you are supportive of the one-cent sales tax?
I'm extremely supportive of the one-cent sales tax, and everyone who wants a well-functioning city should be supported with a one-cent sales tax.
Terry, the question, do you want me to read it?
No. So, as far as infrastructure, the city has failed all of those victims of the January flood. Failed. And we're going to be in a lot of losses, so whoever is the city attorney, let's see one of the candidates back there, how? We'll have to go through that, because we're going to be, it's going to be litigation, it's already started. Hundreds of hundreds of people will be suing the city at rightfully so. We failed them. So, I'm against the one-cent sales tax, and this is why, a couple of reasons why, actually. But the bigger thing is the money's going to go into your general fund. And the council already uses a shell game to move money around to purchase things that they want to purchase, 101 Ash Street. They liquidated all, a lot of money from capital improvements that were already there to pay for certain things. Now they replaced it, but they put a bond on it, so it's a loan, right? So, no, I'm against, unless you can put a grandfather clause on it, or you can say for sure, this money is going where, because I don't want to pay for another Ash Street. I don't think you do either. And if you agree with me on that, then you'll vote no on these taxes. And, you know, when you go to the, I do now, when I go to the grocery store, it's difficult choosing, and I make a silly analogy, that cheese, Cool Whip, what do I need most? Probably cheese, even though I like to eat Cool Whip. I can't afford both, right? Because the price of everything is increasing, right? I know, it's a cost of life at the moment, right? Everything is increasing, why do I want to put that burden on you? All other taxpayers, no. I think the time has come where our council, who really hasn't been very fiducially responsible anyways, needs to look internally and put their ship in the right direction, or could put it in the right direction.
If you oppose the tax, Terry, then how would you ensure that we, you know, continue to fund infrastructure in a way that would prevent things like what happened in January from happening?
Well, you got to be proactive in how you do your agents. You know, there have been what I would call un-prioritized infrastructure that was not, did not serve the city the best way possible. So you got to give back to the basics, and you got to take care of So you got to give back to the basics and you got to take care of infrastructure that is important. And so that's how we look at it.
There's just no way to do the maintenance without additional revenue. Maintenance requires workers. Workers require pay. It's just the way it is. And we need to be able to fully staff our city, which we are on a better trajectory than we were in the past. We need to be able to pay for the infrastructure itself. And again, the easiest talking point for any politician running for any office is we're just going to spend better. I don't know how many times San Diegans are going to be lied to by the elected officials of San Diego or the candidates running for office in San Diego about there being some magical way to fully fund one of the biggest cities in America on one of the smallest per capita revenue, annual revenues that any city has, any big city has. It doesn't work. And the more we lie to ourselves and tell us that it can, the wider that that gap grows and the more painful it's going to be to close it and the more harms that are going to occur while we're attempting to close it.
If our council realizes that the money and our revenue, the San Diego's money, is our money, not their money, it's our money. It's time to tighten the belt, stop doing terrible spending.
Terry, the belt's tightened. There's no more notches left. Read the IBA reports, read the auditors' reports.
I do.
Well, if you read them and you digested them, you'd see that while efficiencies can be gained, they are not enough to close the gap.
Well, you have to gain, you have to gain, Sean. It's not going to pass because there's no trust and confidence in the City Hall at the moment.
What the voters are saying.
Oh, absolutely. But I'm telling you, there's no trust and confidence in what's happening either at the mayor's office or at the council's office. No trust and confidence. It will not pass.
Next question. Council president recently tried to eliminate virtual comment from, ooh, this is hard to read. From moving forward, are you dedicated to ensuring access to virtual participation from the public?
I'm committed to guaranteeing access to participation to the public. The idea that Zoom is the only other way to do that besides in-person comment? You all, we're more creative than that. We're smarter than that. Other cities are doing it. We're working with the clerk to provide additional options. We're not pulling it back right now. But I also really like to re-center the conversation here. I represent the most diverse city council district in San Diego. They have concerns about keeping a roof over their head, putting food on their kids' plates and making sure that they have decent services in their community. And the amount of time that we are spending on topics that do not, that are not at the top of the list of those folks in those communities is incredibly frustrating because we need to get business done at city council in order to make sure those roads get paved, the paddles get filled, to make sure that the work that people expect us to do can get done and not to allow four or five people to add hours per week to the city council meetings. Not the public as a whole, but particular individuals who speak on every item and add literally hours to our council meetings on a weekly basis. That's not fair to the public. We are not expanding access by doing that. We're not expanding my ability to communicate with my constituents by doing that. So I'm fully committed to access to city government. I come from a community organizing background where I worked with folks who would never, ever, ever have the opportunity to do that and brought them to City Hall and other forms of government to do that. What I'm not, what I don't believe is that Zoom is the only way for folks to engage outside of in-person participation.
So quickly, it's not just Zoom. You can call in on a phone. So you can go phone calling. I would never, ever try to limit the voice of people in my district when I'm your city council. We have people that can't drive down. They may be handicapped, they may be elderly, they maybe can't pay the 20 bucks for four hours of parking every day. And maybe just to get there, and it's happened, where the council president removes something from the docket. So you've been there for four hours already and you can't even talk about the subject. So I would, first of all, individuals have the right to address their city officials. And if you really, if you've ever been to a council meeting, I hope you haven't, but if you ever did, you're going to realize this. Every council member has word salad for like five minutes on everything. That makes no sense. Make, it doesn't, let me rephrase that. It's not that it doesn't make sense. It doesn't contribute to what the topic is. I've seen people, I've seen council members praise the city staff, which is fine. They did do a good job, but to sit there for three or four minutes and praise it? First of all, they did their job, right? So thank them, maybe the council president can just thank them. He can praise them for five minutes, but not everybody else. So there's other ways to streamline it. But one, you should never try to silence the voice of the people who elect you. And the only person at this stage who started that was the incumbent. He pulled it only because four hours later, there was so much opposition into the chambers, he pulled it. Just remember that. Again, nothing's personal. I like, Sean's a great dad. I see him all the time. He has his child. That's awesome. But we're just different. We have different ideologies. We're both Dems. We just got different ideologies. So when the dust settles, I always tell people this. If you're happy with what's going on, you vote for Sean. If you're not, you vote for change. You vote for Terry. Easy as pie.
Well, thank you, Sean, and thank you, Terry, for participating today. And thank you for all of you for your thoughtful questions. I'll try to follow up on some of them with the candidates and maybe include them in my newsletter. So I'll make sure we get most of these answered, but thank you.